Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to comply of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors for September 19th, 2023. Before the start of this regular meeting, we met in executive session just now discussing some personnel matters, and before that, we had a budget work session. And we're going to move one agenda item up before the special presentation regarding the golf outing hole-in-one. And I'm going to call Judge Gary Gabardella up to the podium, please. We're moving up item...
It's item B on page four.
Item B on page four. Consideration of the Bucks County Court of Common Pleas, DUI Central Court. The county is looking for comments. I'm going to entertain a motion to table this item.
I make the motion to table this item.
There is not enough information, nor is it appropriate, I think, for this municipality to comment on this. And I understand that they've extended the... or we've missed the deadline for comment. They may extend it, but if and when that happens, we might consider it again, but not likely. But there is a motion to table. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Do you need to say anything, Judge Gabardella?
I don't need to say anything, other than if you... if the board would like to hear from either me, or Judge Dupel, or anybody else, the president of our association, we'd be happy to come forward and give you our point of view. We unanimously voted against it.
Okay.
All 18 district judges throughout Bucks County. So, we'd be happy to supply...
Okay.
I gave you my public comment. I submitted that for your consideration, and I can get you the one that was done by the entire association.
We will not make any decision regarding this unless we hear from you first.
Okay.
Fair enough?
Very good.
Okay. Thank you.
May I have an excuse?
Yes, you are.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome to stay, though. We have a riveting meeting.
I haven't seen my wife in a week. I'd rather spend some time with her.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we want to hear and see the gentleman who won the hole-in-one at the Doylestown Township Golf Outing. Would you please come forward? Who's doing this? What are you doing here? Yeah. Maureen Anderson, you should come up also. Maureen Anderson is like one of the best elder lawyers in the country, and she's a resident of Doylestown Township. So, at the Doylestown Township Golf Outing on August 21st, at the Doylestown Country Club, Mr. Bob Cavallari successfully shot a hole-in-one on the tee and the excitement was heard and witnessed by players at the adjacent holes. And there was a lot of hoopla about it because there was no one actually there to witness it. But the prior foursome and the following foursome all recognized that, or were there to see it happen, and so they testified by affidavit that it indeed happened. So, with that, he won. He won, or they won, an award that entitles him to his six fun-filling days and five exciting nights at accommodations at an Orlando, Florida resort. And you can do it whenever you want, apparently.
Very good.
Congratulations, Bob.
Thank you.
Are you going to take Maureen with you?
Yeah, I would think. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bye. Thank you. You're welcome to stay as well.
You keep trying to convince people.
Maureen is my elder law lawyer. She represented my dad in such great work. Such great work. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda, Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority regarding the 537 Plan update.
Steve Hartman is here from Carroll Engineering on behalf of Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority. Jill Van Houten, Chair of our Public Water and Sewer Advisory Board, is also here in the audience. The Board of Supervisors will remember that earlier this year, we saw a brief presentation on the proposed update, what it would entail. Our Public Water and Sewer Advisory Board continued to work on the update to that with Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority and Mr. Hartman. And tonight, we have the final presentation, or in draft form. And Mr. Hartman's going to walk us through that process.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you for having me here. My name is Steve Hartman with Carroll Engineering Corporation. We prepared the Act 537 Plan update in conjunction with the Township Sewer Board and with the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority. And so, we have a little bit of a slide presentation to show you here. Just the general outline, the Doylestown Township requested that Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority prepare this update to the 537 Plan to address present and future sewage disposal needs for the township. This is a legal requirement per the PA Sewage Facilities Act of 1965. The Act 537 Update is an evaluation of sanitary sewer needs for the township, both existing sewage disposal issues and for future projections, to ensure there is adequate conveyance and treatment capacity in place. The last 537 Plan update for Doylestown Township was done back in September of 1999. And this update focuses on the need to have the public sewer for existing dwellings with on-lot systems, especially those on-lot systems that are failing or have current issues. So, this is a map... Oh, sorry, skipped here. Here, let me sit with me one second. Here we go. All right. So, this is a map of the township, and I will try to zoom out so you can see the entire map at first. So, obviously, you're not going to see all the details there, but essentially where I have the cursor going, everything to the north of this is served by the Chaffon New Britain Plant and the Harvey Ave Waste Water Treatment Plant. The Harvey Ave Plant is a Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority plant. Everything below that is served by two other plants, Green Street and Kings Plaza Treatment Plants. Basically, what you're seeing here, the color coding, is everything in gray has existing sanitary sewer service already provided, and that would be public sewer service. The blue... I'm sorry. The green are either open space, parks, institutional areas we don't think would be developed anytime soon, if ever. Then you have the salmon color, which is the five-year projections. Basically, you have to split all of your future projections in the township out into a five-year, or a 10-year projection, or ultimate, which is years away, plus 10 years. So, right there, the salmon is the five-year, the yellow being the 10-year projection, and blue, everything else, being the ultimate projection. I can go into more detail on the map. Maybe we'll come back to that if there are any questions on it. Let me go back to the PowerPoint here real quick. Okay. Oh, just have to just keep it at that zoomed-in level there. So, the estimated cost of the five-year projects is a requirement for the 537 update. So, here we list the four major projects that are part of that. The 611 corridor area, the area generally described as Pine Valley Road Sanitary Sewer, and the Chestnut Valley Drive Sanitary Sewer Area, and then the Shammany Del Haven. So, these all have individual cost estimates prepared with them. Basically, and they're all broken out into a cost per EDU, a cost per household that would connect. Again, that's all required to be in the 537 update. The next slide here is the implementation steps. So, this is basically the steps that the township would follow to get this to a point where you could submit it to DEP for approval. I could go through item by item, but generally speaking, starting from today, we would have a public notification period for public comments. That would be advertised in a local paper. We would have to submit to the Township and County Planning Commissions, the County Health Department, and then essentially, any comments, we would address, and then we'd be ready to submit this to DEP, Department of Environmental Protection, in about an estimated 220 days from today, if everything went according to plan. This is the same slide, implementation steps, with estimated dates filled in. So, we don't... we won't submit this to DEP, but the reason being, if any of the dates that schedule changes, we don't want to have to change all the dates in the report. So, this is just giving an idea of a timeframe. Generally speaking, if everything went to plan, that we would be ready to submit this to DEP by the end of this year, and conceivably, they would improve it by April of 2024. These are the projects of the five-year projections. This is, again, an implementation schedule that is required by DEP in the 537 Plan. There's a lot of numbers there, a lot of dates that are far out into the future a bit. Basically, I can summarize this by going to this next slide, which are the projected timelines, again, with us adding in some estimated dates. So, that first area, for example, the Edison 611 corridor area, if DEP approved the 537 Plan by when we think it would be, the end of April 2024, then that first item there, completion of the design of that project, would be scheduled for April 21st of 2025, essentially 1.6 years from now. And that's how this whole schedule follows, basically stacking each of those projects with a little bit of buffer in between, so that you're not working on multiple sewer projects at the same time through the township. Any questions on any of those dates right there? Okay. Basically, that's the end of my presentation. Of course, I can answer any other questions, but essentially, what we would be looking for from the board is the support to move forward with the next phase of this, which would be putting out the public notice, advertising the public notice for comments, and then getting the plan off to the Planning Commissions and Health Department for reviews.
Anybody on the board have any questions? Anybody out there have any questions? Hearing non-nusser, a motion to move this matter forward according to the plan that's set forth by this. Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. You're good to go.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good evening.
You too. Thank you. Township audit. Ter.
Auditter?
Auditter.
Hello. My name is Jeff Weiss. I'm a partner with Allen Gobsey Axlerod, the firm that does the townships audit. The audit was released and presented, and we're here to just kind of go over some highlights in it. First thing I want to do is thank Stephanie and Ken, and then all the individuals in the finance office who helped the audit go smoothly. I'm going to go through some of the reports and the highlights. I won't cover every page. We don't want to be here all night. But the most important thing is to go through the audit, page one and two, is our opinion. And once again, our opinion states that the financial statements that are attached are presented fairly in all material respects, so it's an unmodified, unqualified opinion. And then, when you go to the report, pages three to 11 are management's discussion analysis. And what that is, is management's idea and explanations of what happened throughout the year and why the financial statements are the way they are. Our responsibility of those pages is to make sure that there's nothing in them that's inconsistent with the numbers in the financial statements, but we don't particularly audit that. We just make sure that there's nothing that they're saying is wrong. So, I'm actually going to skip to pages 12 and 13 in the audit and kind of go over some... just quickly go over some numbers. The first two financial statements on pages 12 and 13 are what are called the government-wide financial statements. What it is, is the entire operations of the government slammed down into one column, and puts all of the long-term debt that you have, as well as all of your capital assets into it. And that, the total net position that's shown for the government activities is about $29 million. Remember, about $40 million of that is capital assets, and another 30 million of it is liabilities, with some of those being long-term debt liabilities, as well as net pension liability and OPEB obligation liabilities, which we'll cover a little bit later in more detail in some of the notes I'm going to cover. But your statement activities for the government-wide had a minimal change. There was only about a $94,000 change in that position, which is nice. You don't want to have large fluctuations up or down in that area. So, it was about $94,000 change in that position for the year. Page... Page 14 and 16 are probably the two most important ones. People like to know what the general fund looks like. So, your general fund, fund balance, is about $6.5 million, with about 6.35 of that being on a sign that you can use for funding operations. That results in about a 60-some percent comparison to your operating expenditures. So, you have about... fund balance equals about 60-some percent of your operating expenditures. On those columns that are on there, the non-major funds are your smaller funds you operate. And actually, if you go to the back of the report, page 61 and 62 shows details of all those funds. There's about nine of them on there. But this also shows the major funds of the township, with the general fund, of course, being the most important. And your general fund had a net change in fund balance for the year of about $220,000. But when we get to the back and we talk about the budget, it actually had budgeted about a $1.6 million expenditures in excess of revenues. And then, during 2022, you issued long-term debt. You issued a debt issuance for 2022 to refund the 2017, resulting in some savings to you from both payments, as well as economic gains. And that's, once again, detailed a little more back in the notes of the long-term debt. But you do have a healthy fund balance related to the general fund. And then, you also drew down a little bit more in the 2018 note, which is the Bucks County Water and Sewer note, that they'll take over once the project is completed. I'm going to skip a lot of pages and get into some of the detailed notes back on page 33. Starting on page 33, as I mentioned, is more detail on your long-term debt. You still have... the general obligation bond in 2017 was paid off with the 2022, so you still have the promissory note for 2018, which is the one that will transfer to Bucks County Water and Sewer. And then, you also have the general obligation note of 2020 and the new series from 2022 that you issued. On page 34, note seven goes into a lot more detail on the two pension plans, starting with the police pension plan. They are one... some of the items going forward, when you're talking about the governmental activities liabilities, it is some of the bigger liabilities on your books. So, that through page 37 gives you detail on the police pension plan, and then, starting on page 38, actually goes into a lot more detail on the non-uniform pension plan. Both pension plans did see a reduction in your liabilities, or an increase in liability, actually. In prior year, you actually had a overfunding situation, but most of that is related to the fact that the market was so bad in 2022 and drove it down. So... Now, on page 42, there was a couple changes in assumptions. You know, you dropped your interest rate assumptions for both of the plans from 7.25 to 6.75, which also increased your liability in those pension plans. But that's pretty normal from what most townships and municipalities, as well as counties, have done throughout Pennsylvania, is dropping that expected earnings rate on the investments with what's been happening in the market. On page 34, we actually get into details on your other post-employment benefits. You offer other post-employment plan, other post-employment benefits other than pensions. It's mainly health insurance items to your employees on both the police side, as well as non-uniform. And from 44 through, I think, 49, or 47, went into detail on that other post-employment benefit. Your net liability in relation to those two items are about $240,000, not significant, really, to the township. The budget comparison is on page 50, and I had mentioned earlier, you had originally budgeted a net change in fund balance in the general fund of about $1.7 million negative. You ended up negative $200,000, so you kind of beat the budget by almost $1.5 million, which is always a good thing. Your revenues were up about 1.3, and your expenditures were under budget by about $115,000. As you go through the rest of the pages, 51 through 57, are a lot more details on your pension plan, and details over the years, and you can show comparisons over what your pension plans have done. And then, page 59 through 62 are more details on your pension funds, the actual funds and money that you have in them, and then also more details on the smaller funds that you have at the township, the non-major funds. As I said, we had no findings, no issues, no internal control matters. I mean, we issued an unmodified opinion on your audit. That was the gist of my highlights. I will take any questions.
Any questions? We've all read the audit. Anyone have anything... anybody out there have any questions? Hearing non, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks.
Okay. Public comment on agenda items, if any.
Better Cox. I live in Doylestown Township. Funny thing happened on the way from June to July, when apparently, the budget for the new rec center went from $9 million to almost $15 million, $5 million increase. I'm not sure what happened, but I think it's wrong. I also think that this board... and you can go look it up. You published the documents. I've got the published documents.
Can I ask you to bring this matter to our board meeting on October 3rd, when we will be discussing the rec center? It's not on the agenda tonight.
Okay. I'd be perfectly happy to.
Thank you.
But please be prepared to answer why we went from a rec center to where we now have four major projects: courts, a rec center, a comfort house, and rebuilding the electrical infrastructure and putting a generator in. And I also am asking the counselor, I would like to get a formal response as to what we have to do to get this project put on the forum, as a referendum on the ballot in November, so that the people in Doylestown Township have a voice, because right now, it's just the board.
Any other public comment for agenda items? Please take the podium, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Brooke Henningson. I live at 788 West Sandy Ridge. On May 2nd, I had sent a letter to the board in regards to the backyard poultry and the current zoning ordinances with it. And I believe you guys had decided to kick that over to zoning, for them to review it with their committee. So, we met with them in, I think it was June. And then, they went on hiatus in July, and then reconvened for August, and we had a follow-up with them. At the last meeting, they had told us that they would do some due diligence, and I think they phrased it as homework, and would get back to us on the agenda topic. One person did some, I guess, looking into it. He said that he had checked some townships, or no, boroughs, I apologize, boroughs, in Chester County, and felt that the current ordinances was in alignment with those, and that they should remain as-is. In my letter, I had asked many questions. None were addressed, and I feel that I had put forth an incredible amount of information. It was, as you all read, a six-page manifesto. And I feel that none of those were even remotely looked into or given the time of day. When we asked how many properties that are residential, that are in the township of Doylestown, are a minimum of five acres, which is what is currently required for roosters, they didn't have an answer, but guesstimated it would be about 20%. I looked into it, and there are 63. 63 residences that are five acres or more, and that equates to about just shy of 2% of the entire township. When you look at the other surrounding boroughs and townships, which quite frankly, I feel those are the more accurate measure of what we should be addressing this, not Chester County, since we live absolutely nowhere near Chester County, I presented multiple boroughs and multiple townships, and what their zoning currently was. Ours didn't come close to the amount of leniency and understanding of agricultural history that Bucks County has and so rich. If you even look at the Doylestown Borough, they have zero restrictions on it, no number restrictions. The only restriction that they have is that it can't be a noise ordinance, or it can't be cruelty situation to the animals themselves. I don't understand why it is so difficult for people to be allowed in this community to have their rights to not only enjoy pets freely as they wish, but also to be able to provide food for their family on something that is a more sustainable and self-sufficient manner. It's also incredibly important for children to learn these types of, you know, situations. The other thing is 4H. 4H is a huge portion of our community here, but there are some parents that would not be able to give their children that opportunity because they can't afford to have the amount of property that the township is requiring them to. But then, you look at Philadelphia, and they changed it this year because they understood, since COVID, there has been a huge shift. And they changed it to where you could have six hens. When you look at the average square footage of a lot size that's residential in Philadelphia, it's 1,089 square feet. For us, in Bucks County, in Doylestown Township, you're only to have a minimum of 40,000 square feet. That will get you five. Now, if you're feeding a family of four, that's completely inappropriate, number-wise. I went through in the list the entire reason as to why, and I won't bore all of these good people here, because I'm sure you have far better things to do. And I apologize for taking your time up as the crazy chicken lady, but I think that it's really something that needs to be addressed. If they won't do their job, I really hope that you guys would, because we put faith in you guys. We bring you to this table to work for the township. And when we feel that we're not being heard, it hurts, and it feels like you are completely worthless, and you have no voice in a community that we are supposed to be all a part of. And that's the most upsetting thing about this, to be so dismissed. So, I would pray and hope that you guys take the time to actually review this and maybe usurp what they had suggested, and somebody do a little bit of homework into this. I'd be happy to meet with any one of you on a private level, so that it's not taking up everybody else's time, if you have any questions on the matter. But I do appreciate you listening tonight.
Thank you. I think that...
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
I appreciate your comments. And I actually think that... I'm trying to think back when we made this ordinance. It was definitely within... I was on the board with it.
It was... well, the original one was more restrictive.
Right, and then we...
When I first... so, it was like five years ago.
Yeah. I think that, you know, I know this went to the zoning and hearing...
Planning Commission.
Excuse me, Planning Commission.
You have their minutes in their packet.
Right. I do think that this probably garners maybe conversation with the EAC. And I mean, I'm... I have a difference of opinion than I did when we even loosened the restrictions in terms of like, I hear all the things you're saying and agree with a lot of them. I think it's, you know, finding that fine balance, and I think that's what we tried to do when we made the restrictions, you know, lessen the restrictions. But I think there's probably a little bit more comparative analysis we need... But I think there's probably a little bit more comparative analysis we need to do. And I think, Dan, that the EAC should probably become part, because it becomes part of a larger discussion, right? And, you know, I think there's a bunch of people that are scared that everybody's going to have a hundred chickens in their backyard. And the reality is, that's not going to be the case. And so I do think we should, I think that we should have more discussion around this. And I think it should probably maybe start with the EAC.
Sure, but Jen is the...
Oh, sorry. I'm looking at you.
I'm having to talk to the A.C.
Yes.
No, I agree. I mean, when we loosened the restrictions up about five years ago, we were saying that this is to test it, to see how this goes. But I do have to tell you, there, as much as we hear people that want to have backyard chickens, and I'm one of them that's considered it. We also hear on the other side about the noise. And I understand other animals make noises. But we do specifically hear rooster, like complaints about rooster noises. And it seems like a very interesting topic to have at a supervisor meeting. But it is true, we hear both sides. So we have to find a good place where people can live comfortably in the township.
And I completely understand that. And I'm not looking for a one-sided zoning here. But I think everybody in this room will agree, the entire world is a different place than it was five years ago.
Yeah.
COVID changed everything. It completely put the world on its ear. And that, when it had that ripple effect of not only being locked down, but also then our supply chains being so severely affected. It's one of those things where people started to look into more self-sustainability and, you know, gardening and, you know, backyard keeping of husbandry for animals. That's kind of something that's really important. And again, this being our heritage, our roots, it's something that it feels like it's, we're getting really far away from it. And I understand wanting to suburbanize and everything. And I'm not looking for people to have a hundred chickens on their backyard. I do think that would be a little excessive unless you have tons of acres. I get it. But knowing how fleeting their life can be and how low they are in the food chain and how, you know, just a random Tuesday, they'll just up and die for no reason. It takes a lot to have a sustainable flock. So in order to, you know, for my particular property, it would be six. It would be impossible for me to ever get eggs between them going broody, getting sick, injured, whatever. It would never happen. And the amount of time it takes to raise them, I feel like it has to be looked at holistically.
At our last meeting, when we considered this, we asked you guys to go to the planning commission. We sent this to the planning commission. They made their recommendation to not change the ordinance.
Correct.
So we're going to have the planning commission work with the environmental advisory council and see if we can come up with some kind of expansion of the current ordinance that works with, as Ms. Herring said, with the neighbors that surround the chicken, the lives of the chickens. So we'll take another look.
I appreciate it.
We'll ask them to take another look.
I would definitely like another look. I appreciate you coming.
And just to let you know, I'm the liaison on both of those committees. So if you need a point person on the board...
Well, then we get to know each other very well.
You can always email me.
Perfect. Thank you, guys.
And for the information of the rest of the meeting, we are moved, we have moved and dealt with item number five A, excuse me, nine of five A, I mean, five B, which is your zoning ordinance, backyard chickens. So we're done with that matter today, okay? Ms. Henningson? Mrs. Henningson, we're done with your matter today. We moved you up on the agenda. You're welcome. Thank you. Okay. Any other public comment on agenda items? Nothing heard? Okay, next meeting of this board is Tuesday, October seventeenth at seven P.M. The Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors and the Finance Committee will hold a budget work session on Tuesday, October third. We're going to discuss later the time. And we're going to have a budget session also on October seventeenth at five P.M. Doylestown Township Municipal Building will be closed on October ninth in observance of Indigenous Peoples' Day. Keep up with township news and sign up for the E-News. It comes to your box on every Friday at four. Next item on the agenda is approval. Wait, we don't have, we don't have the Truck Food Festival on here, do we?
Which is the Saturday, from ten to six.
Yeah. Is that here?
It's on the E-News as well, but it's been on there.
Announcement, the Food Truck Festival is a Saturday, ten to six?
Twelve to six, I think.
Is it twelve to six?
Yeah.
Twelve to six in Central Park. So it's going to be a fun thing, lots of food, lots of trucks and music and all kinds of happy things to do. So, ten, twelve to six on Saturday, Central Park. Okay, sorry. Next item on the agenda is consideration of the budget work session notes from July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Has everyone had a chance to review them? Is there a motion to approve them?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is approval and consideration of the regular meeting minutes from August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Everyone had a chance to review them? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And then we had a special meeting on August thirtieth, and those minutes are in your packet as well. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Mr. Orin second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next, we have a special consideration of the Doylestown Rotary Young Professionals Charity Event, asking for concert fee waivers. You see their request totals roughly seven hundred sixty dollars. Is there a motion to approve that those fee waivers, they do not approach the thousand-dollar limit? So it's within our policy to do so?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is, anything from the solicitor?
Nothing we won't discuss later in the agenda.
Township engineer?
I will save comments for later.
Chief, I mean, excuse me, lieutenant? Director of Operations?
Yes, thank you. Couple of items that I have. First is a request for the board to ask the board to solicit phone bids for what we're calling the admin service counter transaction window. We had received a recommendation from Delaware Valley Health Trust as a risk control item that we replace the front glass here in the service counter for the admin and the code departments in the lobby here. We put together two bids. I outlined in my memo, the first bid was advertised in August. I'm sorry, first bid was back in April. We received no bids. Second bid was advertised properly in August. Received no bids a second time. Because of that, we're asking the board to allow us to solicit phone bids for this project. This project is a capital project in the budget as well as we have approximately ten thousand dollar grant from the Delaware Valley Health Trust for this project as well. So asking for the board's approval to solicit phone bids, please.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, my second item is our two thousand twenty-three tree pruning and takedown rebid award recommendation. We had to rebid our project because the low bidder from the first round withdrew his bid for the project. So we advertised the project accordingly. It was on Penn bid, and the bids were open on September twelfth. Six bids were received of that. The way this broken down is there's a base bid for open space, trail, and roadway, right-of-way work. That total is one hundred thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars. Additionally, we worked with the Doylestown Township Municipal Authority to bid work that they have to do in one of their easements. We bid that as an alternate item. That bid amount came in at twenty-five thousand dollars. The DTMA is going to reimburse the township for the twenty-five thousand dollars or pay the invoice directly. I don't know how that's going to work out. The total bid amount, which we're asking it would award to Joseph McElveen Tree and Lawn, totals one hundred eighty-three thousand eight hundred dollars. Includes the base bid plus alternate number one, please.
Did you say a hundred and eighty-three? I thought it was a hundred and thirty-eight.
Hundred, sorry, I apologize. Hundred thirty-eight thousand eight hundred. Yes, thank you for the correction.
Everyone understand the memo? Is there a motion to approve reward to Joseph McElveen Tree and Lawn for a total of one hundred thirty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars, which would include a twenty-five thousand dollar reimbursement of some sort from DTMA?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item on Mr. Torpe will address.
On September twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, we received four bids for the two thousand twenty-three bike and hike trail maintenance paving contract. Of the four submitted bids, T. Schaefer Contractors Inc. out of Doylestown was the lowest qualified bidder. We would like to tonight ask for an award for the contract of a base bid of seventy-six thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars, an alternate bid one of thirty-one thousand nine hundred sixty dollars, and an alternate bid number two of twenty-four hundred dollars for a total bid award of one hundred ten thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars to T. Schaefer Contractors Inc. of Doylestown, Pennsylvania.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any other, any questions?
I have a question. The spaces that were identified that we were referring to before, Dave, are spaces, the trails that are being redone were identified through your crew? Is that correct?
Correct. Mr. Mason, our park superintendent, identified this project. It's been a capital project for about a year or two on our budget. So, yes.
And will those paths be widened or they will just be corrected and paved?
This path is going to be rebuilt in place. We will widen the access at Ridgeview Lane for the, which is pretty much like an ADA ramp so that our vehicles can get on it to do winter maintenance or any type of maintenance. We're going to widen that, but the trail will remain the same width.
Thank you. Just a motion and second? Any other questions? Calling the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's five and oh, thank you. Okay, supervisors.
You're the township manager.
Sorry, township manager. You're more important.
Thank you. The budget work session was advertised for the year, but a time was not set because sometimes we don't need that work session. But we do need it this year. In addition, I'm requesting a special meeting on the same day to review the bids that we've recently received relating to the community recreation center and park improvements. So looking for times for the ten-three meeting in addition to any other business that we may need to address that day.
How about if we start the budget session meeting at four-thirty and just follow with the special meeting?
Would you rather do the special meeting and address so that when you get to budget, you'll have a better understanding?
That probably makes more sense.
Yeah, that makes more sense, I think, yeah.
What you said, Stephanie.
Okay.
So four-thirty and then immediately following the budget work session?
You need to have a time specific, though, for a special meeting because you have to advertise a set time.
Well, the special meeting would be four-thirty, right?
Yes.
And then the budget work session, does that need a specific time? You can't just...
If it's a meeting of the supervisors, yes.
About five-thirty.
Well, the meeting of this, we said that should go before the budget meeting.
No, special meeting at four-thirty if I'm following and budget work session at five-thirty.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Okay. Good. Does that need a vote?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the setting of those two meetings?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just have one other item. I'd like to quickly recognize Stacy Crandell, our assistant manager. This is her last meeting. Stacy's been with us for a while, but she was recently appointed to the Souderton Borough as their new manager. She's only going to be the fourth manager in the history of the Borough. And on behalf of the township, I want to thank Stacy for all of her contributions to the township and to the staff. She's really fit in and has done amazing things here, and we are all going to miss her. But I know she's going to be a wonderful manager in Souderton Borough. And I wish her many, many years of success in Souderton. Yes.
We're going to read about you, right?
We'll miss you, Stacy.
Yeah, thank you very much. I really appreciate it. I really enjoyed my time here, so thank you.
Okay. Well, on that note, supervisors, Dan?
All right. First up, our bike and hike committee will be happy to hear that some of the road or trails are going to be repaved. So I spoke with them this morning, continuing to move along on future projects. And with the approval to move along with the five-thirty-seven plan, our water and sewer board will continue, resume meeting regularly. We've been waiting for that approval because it's been kind of held up. So those are my reports. This next part's a little different. So thirty-two years ago, in nineteen ninety-one, Doylestown Township made a three-point-seven million dollar investment into the future of our community, purchasing a hundred and fifty-five and a half acres of farmland from a developer. That previous board of supervisors then spent an additional three-point-four million to turn it into a park for our community. They invested that additional money to build parking lots, basketball and tennis courts, athletic fields, walking trails, pavilions, and more to provide that place next to where it is right now called Central Park. If we adjust for inflation, they spent a little over sixteen million dollars to build that park. By all accounts, it's a massive investment in our community. I don't have the meeting minutes from thirty years ago in front of me, but I'm sure there are many varied decisions about this from residents at the time, just like we have many voices and opinions today. Looking back on it, I assume most of us would agree that the board made the right choice to invest in Doylestown's future back then. But I also have to imagine things weren't that clear-cut when this was discussed in nineteen ninety-one. I was five then. Across the street, Doylestown Lee was still mostly farm fields with just a few houses built. Doylestown Hunt up the road was the same way. Doylestown Knoll was just a single farmhouse. And Doylestown Station behind us wouldn't even start construction for another ten years. I could go on listing neighborhoods, but I think you get my point. Hundreds of new families have moved into Doylestown after Central Park was purchased, and it wouldn't surprise me if that park played some role in their decision to move here. I can't begin to count the number of fond memories I've had with family and friends at Central Park over thirty years of its existence. And I'm thirty-six, by the way, so that's a good chunk of my life. I'm fortunate to still be close with people I met at Coots Elementary and spent countless hours with them at Central Park from events like Oktoberfest, the Relay for Life, the opening of Kids Castle, and sledding down snow-covered hills, waiting for my brother and sister to finish their camps at that old clamshell trailer and then running around the camp that can park with them afterwards. It's really impossible for me to guess how many hours I've spent here with friends, family, pets, and just by myself. Even after college, those same friends and I still make plans to all go back to Central Park and watch fireworks together. And we see old classmates, teachers, neighbors, coaches, parents of friends, and so much more. And now, my son's almost the same age I was then and has those same opportunities and more. I get to smile watching him do the same things I did, like showing him which hills are the best to roll down. And we get to keep making more of these memories in our community with this place. And that's just my story, one story. There are many thousands of stories and memories that have been made here in Central Park because of that investment in nineteen ninety-one. And it's not just memories either. Our community sees tangible benefits as well. Those neighborhoods I mentioned earlier all got to benefit from having one of Bucks County's crown jewel parks in their backyard. Our businesses benefit from people coming to Central Park and then needing a place to shop and eat. Those little league coaches have to take their winning teams out for victory pizza somewhere. And let's not forget, every tired parent who just needs something to do with their kid for a couple hours to get a break. That last one's probably personal experience, talking again. And I would be remiss not to mention that thousands upon thousands of hours our volunteers and township staff have poured into this park to make it a special place and to change it to grow within needs of our community over the years. Almost thirty years later, we have a chance to make a new investment in Central Park for another thirty years, and not just Central Park, but our community. Despite some characterizations, this project is not just constructing a building for parks and recreation. It's much more than that. It's renovating our courts for decades of future games of tennis, basketball, pickleball, and whatever new sports might be invented in the next couple decades. It's putting bathrooms by Kids Castle for parents racing against the clock to avoid unfortunate accidents and to have facilities closer to our summer concert series and festivals. It's about improving infrastructure for electricity and security. And the building itself is more than just a generic building with a gym. It's a place for children to learn new activities, hobbies, and hopefully lifetime passions. It's a place for our senior citizens to come and participate in activities that they might not have access to otherwise. It's a place for families to rent for celebrations in Central Park and Kids Castle. It's a place where we can host educational seminars with experts across the area to help our residents learn new skills or see what opportunities may be available to them through various programs. And of course, there's a gym that's open to more than just league sports and provides indoor space for activities of all types and all ages. We have ideas how we can use this facility tomorrow. But I guarantee you, in thirty years, residents will be having events there that we never imagined today, just like with the original bare-bones Central Park thirty years ago. original bare-bones Central Park thirty years ago. A new generation of residents will get to experience the benefits of this community investment, just like mine did with Central Park. And none of this is to say that I'm dismissing the cost of the project or its impact on our townships. I'm well aware of that. In fact, I'm proud of my record voting to keep costs down. Several times, I've ended up in the minority on these votes. Supervisor Herring and I voted against including the gymnasium, noting that it was the single biggest driver in the cost of the building. In a later vote, I joined Supervisor Lyons in the minority against adding additional court space to the project. Both of these votes weren't because I didn't see a value in these projects, but because of an effort to balance the cost of the project. Even though there are additions to the project that I don't personally agree with, I still see this overall project as a worthwhile investment for our community with the express needs of our residents at the forefront. This isn't something we decided to do just this year. This has been in the works for several years, even before I joined the board in 2020. Public discussions, meetings with committees, correspondence with residents, outreach to our community partners, ample public debate on this board have shaped this to be a reflection of our Doylestown's vision for the future. I think back to nineteen-ninety-one, and I think about that sixteen million dollars in today's money that the township chose to invest in Central Park and the massive boon that has been, turned out to be not just for Doylestown, but for the entire region these past thirty years. Just like investing money in our roads, this is an investment in the spirit of our township, and we want what we want our Doylestown community to have access to in the future. As I wrote this speech down, I can't begin to tell you how truly fortunate I feel to have been able to grow up alongside Central Park. You take for granted that it's something that's always been there, and I look forward to watching my son and his peers grow up with it and taking for granted the improvements this board and this community can add to our park today. Thank you. That's it for my comments.
Thank you, Dan. Nancy, you have anything?
I'm just, go ahead, let someone go. I'm just trying to find what I was going to read. Hold on. Go ahead.
Dan?
Sure. I had a wonderful conversation with one of our volunteer firefighters this week, and he had mentioned to me, we had talked about this new act that's coming up, this Act Ninety-One. It basically is looking to offer our firefighters some tax relief as kind of compensation for all the hard work and risk that they put themselves through serving our communities. And in this discussion, we had talked about what we can do as a township to help our volunteer firefighters. And I know we put together a wonderful video for recruitment. It's actually an award-winning video for recruitment. It's beautiful. If you go on YouTube, you'll find it. But there's more that we can do, I'm sure of it. So, I just want to ask my fellow board members to, you know, think about it, see what else we can do to recognize our volunteer firefighters, but I also want to ask the community to do the same. And whenever you see somebody who's a volunteer firefighter, please at least thank them and let them know that their work is appreciated because the hours and hours and hours of training that has to go into being a volunteer firefighter and all the time that they have to spend away from their families, it's really valuable. So, that's all I had for today.
And you don't have to be a firefighter. A friend of mine just volunteered for the Doylestown number one as an accountant or, you know, to help them out with their services. So, if you're beyond the age where you can actually put the boots on, there are other ways you can volunteer. So, it's a very, very worthwhile endeavor, I would assume. I wish I could do it, but I'm beyond that age, so.
Thank you, Chairman.
I can do the auxiliary and help cook, right? But those ladies do such a wonderful job with that roast beef. I don't know. Thank you. Nancy, you ready?
Oh, sure. Dan, thanks for that. I would agree. I think everybody in this room would agree that Central Park is really an amazing place where regional park. I remember when they built Kid's Castle and then when we redid it, so I think no one would disagree with you that it's created incredible memories, and it is a destination. As you know, I've been the one on the board that's sort of questioned where we're going with this. When I came on board, I was a hundred percent in support of the project. It has imploded, but I'm not in support of spending seventy or even a hundred percent of our operating budget. So, I think we need to be mindful and come to smart business decisions about what we can afford and what we want to put on our residents. I think we need to be smart in how we communicate it and make them feel, just like we talked about with our chickens, that people feel their voices are heard. So, I reserve all comments until after we get all the budget information, but I am very concerned. I think what our original intentions are versus where we are now are still things that we need to resolve, and I want to tease them out. I want to have civil discussion about it among the board. I think what we talked about were promises. I think we have to be realistic where we are, pay with sustainability, with COVID, and with our current budget situations. That's all I have to say. Thank you. And want to also thank Lieutenant Ziegler, who did an excellent presentation earlier today on the police.
All right. Ryan, you have anything?
Yes. First, I want to thank Dan. Thank you for your comments. I appreciate them. I just want to bring up something in general about communications, specifically with our township staff. It's recently become a, I think the best way to put it, a burden on our township staff in email communications from some of the board members, to the point where they are having trouble doing their daily work because of incessant emails and answering questions that we have the answers to already, that have been, that we have the information to. And so, I want to try to find some sort of process where the township staff is not burdened by these emails. I'm trying to, you know, I'm open to suggestions on how best to do this. I think, you know, the one thing is, the one thing is, you know, things can, number one, I think that all communications to the township staff should flow through the township manager from the board members. We should, if we have questions, we should be going to Stephanie specifically, but that is to say Stephanie should not be overburdened with emails back and forth that take up an exorbitant amount of her time. And so, I'm looking for recommendations from the rest of the board on how best to do this, if it is, you know, we have, you know, we have the availability to, once a week, shoot an email to Stephanie with questions we may have. I'm kind of open, but we have to come to some conclusion because it's becoming a problem.
Okay. Can we think about it and then come back with some kind of ideas at the next meeting?
Yes.
And maybe have staff input into this or not? We'll just see.
Okay.
But I think we need to think on it and see if we can come up with some potential solutions.
Thank you.
I would ask our solicitor to also add in. I mean, as elected officials, things happen. Right now, we're in the process of spending a lot of money. There's a lot of moving parts, and there probably is a more of an influx of emails. It doesn't, is not meant to burden the staff. It's meant to make sure we make informed decisions, and every email is shared with every supervisor, I would hope.
But it's become harassing in, to a degree.
What exactly is a harassment?
Well, listen, we're not going to have this debate.
If you're going to call names, I'm going to ask you, what is a harassment, Ryan?
Nancy, we're just.
I don't want to be called names. I will not put up with it.
Nobody called your name.
Oh, she did.
No one's name.
We're just, we're just going to think about.
We're talking about it overall.
Think about ways of dealing with going forward, communications that may be burdensome for this.
Okay, well, I'd love to have all the capital campaign information shared with staff too, which I've asked for, and it's not, or not staff, but with supervisor. So, I mean, there's lots of things that are shared or not shared.
We're going to think about it and come back at the next meeting with some suggestions.
Great.
Okay. Anything else, Ryan?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, I have a few things, and I'll be very quick. On October, you know, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and on October first, there's going to be a showing at the county theater of the movie called Hide. And I make this recommend, a reference because the producer and one of the stars of the show is a township resident, Ben Samuels. His parents live in Doylestown Township still, and this is his production. It's been in the works for a few years. So, tickets are available online at County Theater, and the show again is called Hide on October first at seven P.M. So, I hope everybody can like, take a look at it. And there is a trailer on County Theater for the movie. The other thing I wanted to congratulate Gerharts, who had a ribbon cutting for their new show, I mean showroom. Gerharts, of course, is the appliance company, have many locations in, which, what's it, Doylestown Point?
No, Doyle's Farm Plaza Shopping.
Farm Plaza Shopping Center. Take a look. It's an amazing, it's amazing store right now, I mean, now. So, the ribbon cutting was last week, and it's a very worthwhile visit. The other thing is, my last thing is, I wanted to congratulate the staff, especially Ken Wallace, for an excellent presentation last week to Moody's Investment Services. That's a project, that's something we had to go through to get a rating for the seven-million-dollar general obligation bond that we intend to undertake if and when the vote is favorable for the recreation center on October third. Moody's has assigned to us a double-A-one rating. Thank you very much, Ken, who was excellent in the presentation, Ed Ebenbach, Brendan Bray was there, head of the finance committee, myself, and of course, Stephanie Mason. The interview went so well, obviously, we got a double-A-one rating, and that's the highest rating the township with this median income can get. So, it's as good as we can get. And so, thank you, Ken. You're on top of everything. Really appreciate all your hard work for that. And also, thank you, one of the key reasons is that the finance department, Ken, is, has shepherd, shepherds the budget to excellence every year, and that was one of the, that was one of the comments that was made in the findings. So, congratulations, Doylestown Township. It's a good result. And that's all I have, I think. Yep. Okay, unfinished business there, speaking of general fund balance policy. Ken, do you want to come forward and hit on that a little bit?
As we spoke at the last budget workshop, I was proposing on formalizing the fund balance policy here for the township. And I don't know if you caught during Mr. Wise's presentation of the financial statements that our general fund, fund balance is currently six-point-four million dollars, which is...
That's ominous.
I've been preempted.
Do we have to plug you back in again, Ken?
I'm sure.
It's not you.
I think we're having a little technical difficulty in our telecommunications advisory room.
Does he know that?
You have to talk to Ladder, Ken.
I guess I'm going to have to.
Yeah, fine.
There we go.
Okay, here we go. So, I don't know if you caught that statistic that the fund balance for the general fund is six-point-four million dollars, which represents fifty-seven percent of the operating expenditures. So, what I'm proposing to do is that we've always used the ten percent minimum critical fund balance for the township and to increase it to fifteen percent, fifteen to twenty percent. Now, I was talking with somebody this afternoon who doesn't have a financial background, and he said to me, Ken, fund balance is a measurement of activity, and that basically is it in a nutshell, is a measurement of activity. So, if we're moving from ten percent to fifteen percent of operating expenditures for the township, would move it from, like for this year as an example, from one-point-two-million dollars to one-point-six-million dollars. So, that's what I'm proposing to do. And like I said, the fund balance policy, it would be formalized. We would have a minimum critical fund balance, and because of our strong reserves and fund balances, is because, you know, we have a double-A-one rating. And, you know, that's what I'm proposing to do. And I wanted to get some direction from the supervisors tonight about formalizing the fund balance and moving it from a ten percent to a fifteen percent fund balance policy.
I'll entertain that as, we'll entertain that as a motion?
I'll make a motion to that. I'll second.
Can I ask a question first?
Of course.
Thank you. Ken, when you talk about going from ten to fifteen percent, this is unrestricted, you're moving it to unrestricted funds?
Yes, this would only pertain to the general fund.
So, and you said it was originally operating expenditures. What funds are they moving out of when you?
They're not moving out of any funds. You know, the operating expenses for 2023 is twelve million dollars. So, right now, our fund balance policy is a minimum critical one-point-two-million dollars, and I'm proposing to move it up five percent to fifteen percent, which would be one-point-eight-million dollars in a minimum critical fund balance.
And the gain of that is, of doing that versus, I mean, when it's unrestricted, like, I don't like holding on to anybody's tax dollars. Like, if it's coming in, it should be going out and being used, and if we're holding on an extra five percent.
Well, you have to.
It's a help with our, our bond, our bond value, or?
Well, obviously, it does, because with our strong fund balance, Moody's took a look at that, and they were impressed with our, our fund balance for the general fund, our operating fund.
Which at that time was ten percent. Right. I mean, I know we've always been very conservative, and that's why, so I thank the staff. But I think just based on the economy, my concern is to hold back more. I don't want to see taxes go up as a result because we're trying to maintain this number. Do you know what I mean? It's like putting a...
It doesn't have anything to do with taxes or the millage. It's just you're, it's the township's preparation in case of a what-if event, a catastrophic event, weather event, that we would have the proper reserves in place to take care of that event. And if you take a look at our five-year forecast, if you go out three years, we're already at eighteen percent as far as our fund balance percentage is concerned. So, like I said, I'm just proposing to move it from ten to fifteen percent, and if the board doesn't want to move from ten to fifteen percent, we want to keep it at ten percent, we'll just keep it at ten percent, but we're going to formalize it as a policy.
Okay. So, was there, were you asked to raise it, or was that something that you decided to do?
Being a, being a member of the GFOA membership, I've always, I'm always reading about these type of things as far as fund balances and reserves and what's the proper reserve, what's the type of, what's the proper fund balance. And like I said in the last meeting, the, the best practice fund balance is sixteen-point-seven percent, and we're going to move it, you know, with the approval of the board from ten to fifteen percent.
And if I might interject, the, the policy that we're looking to do right now also gives flexibility in case we do have to change that.
Correct.
It's not going to stay this for, in perpetuity. It'll, we can modify it if there's a need.
Correct. And we have already passed, you know, with a resolution some years back, the, we adopted the GAZB fifty-four fund balance policy on what is restricted, what is assigned, unassigned, those type of items as far as the, the funds are concerned. So, this only has to do with the general fund. This only has to do with the operations.
When you have, so when you have unrestricted, so if we have an extreme cost for the trails or what's coming out of that unrestricted fund, that fifteen, because you're, you keep referencing like a weather event.
We've experienced two tornadoes in the township in 2020 and in 21. We were very fortunate that our, you know, the, what happened here, but, you know, other communities experienced devastation. We realized that could be one of the things. We've experienced hurricanes, so those are the things that I think, you know, obviously there's insurance, but before insurance can kick in, there will be things that we have to do to respond to that emergency, and we want to be prepared through the fund balance to be able to do that.
See, like I said, this is a minimum critical fund balance. We're not even near that right now. We're at six-point-four-million dollars as far as our fund balance is concerned. is concerned.
Okay, there's a motion in a second. I'm calling the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Nay. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you very much.
And, and just so you know, that this policy also gives Ken the flexibility to implement whatever needs to be implemented, and he will review it annually and report to us if for any changes or, you know, any requirements that we need to know about.
Thank you.
Thank you. Because I was four and one. Okay, all right, we've dealt with backyard chickens, she's gone now, and, okay, so the next item on the agenda is new business Bucks County Crisis Center.
For the board's edification, there's no action to be taken tonight, this is just a bit of information to provide to the board and to the public about this particular project.
Kelly McGowan is here representing the, the event.
Yes, Madam Chair.
The developments, welcome.
Thank you. Board members, good evening, Kelly McGowan, the project attorney for the Bucks County Crisis Center. With me tonight, Margie McKevitt, COO of the County of Bucks, also Sharon Curran, our CEO of the Lenape Valley Foundation, Chris Thompson, the COO of the Lenape Valley Foundation, and Jerry Gorski from Gorski Engineering, who is our project manager, getting this project off the ground. So we are here, what we wanted to do, we filed a sketch plan, as Jeff said, this is not an action item, but what we wanted to do in filing the sketch plan was to provide your staff with an opportunity to take a look at the project, provide your planning commission with an opportunity to give us some feedback with respect to the project. So we wanted to come here, make a presentation to the board prior to the filing of our preliminary plans, to as well give you an update. So what I can show you on the screen, the Crisis Center is proposed to be a medical office, approximately 22,000 square feet, located on the campus of Doylestown Hospital. So what you can see on the screen is Doylestown Hospital's campus, to the right of the screen, the larger, where the hospital building is located, and then as you go down Memorial Drive, what we call the access road, at the bottom of the plan, you get out to a triangle piece of property that butts up to West Street Lime Kiln. That is where the current Lenape Valley Foundation building is located, and the proposed Crisis Center would be situated immediately next to the existing Lenape Valley Foundation building. What the Crisis Center would offer is a building that would provide mental health crisis services that are currently being offered in the emergency room of Doylestown Hospital, and in emergency rooms throughout hospitals in Bucks County. Why we think this is important is a Crisis Center can provide those mental health services in a better, safer, more efficient manner in order to care for these patients in a way that we hope gets the process, makes the process even better for, for those who live in the county. And I think on that note, I should show you what we're looking at. So, this is the proposed building, as I said, it's approximately 22,000 square feet, we're located down at the corner, you can see the parking lot of the existing Lenape Foundation to the right. This is a C4 district, it's a medical office, we fleshed out all of our zoning issues during the course of those reviews that I mentioned, we received a review from Sean, review from Judy, and then also your, your traffic engineer. What came out, a couple highlights, I'd just like the board to be aware of as we worked through this plan, some things that you'll look for, is the bike and hike trail. As we know, I know when we've been here at the board in previous plans, previous projects for Doylestown Hospital, we've had conversations about that bike and hike trail, which is actually currently located on the access road. We've tried multiple things in order to, you know, kind of get the bike and the vehicle traffic separated. One of the comments and one of the recommendations is that we actually look at a physical separation of the bike and hike trail. So we have been working on that, and again, before we file preliminary plans, we're going to be coming back in, it was recommended to sit down with staff, some members of the Bike and Hike Committee, so we'll go ahead and do that. The other thing that we're looking at right now is the parking situation, you can see that we have right now a connection between these parking areas. The crisis services, our expectation is that the, it's, it's not a high use during business hours, tends to be off use, so Lenape Valley Foundation, currently we're operating in that, in that building primarily during office hours, regular business hours, I should say. So we're looking at facilitating parking that way. The other thing that we think is important, and Barbara was kind enough, and Stephanie set up a meeting with our project team and the lieutenant already to talk about a safety and security plan. So that is in process, in connection with the filing of those preliminary plans, we're going to be solidifying that safety and security plan and presenting that, and having further discussions about how this facility's going to work. It is proposed to have a Sallyport and full security system and everything that you would, that you would expect, and that you would imagine for this type of facility. So that's where we are, our next steps are the filing of the preliminary plans, which as I said, we're working on. The County of Bucks would also like to, to have a roundtable with all of the stakeholders, so we can provide, instead of my, you know, high-level view of what we're talking about, answer any questions, and provide some more detail about what services are going to be provided at the Crisis Center, and how this is going to benefit Bucks County.
Does the county want to have that discussion tonight, or should we have a separate conversation about it?
No, we're, we're thinking about organizing something even to get more people into the room.
Okay.
Yeah, so we can, we can make sure to get, to get the information out, so I appreciate that, Barbara.
Let us know, and you're welcome to use this room.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kelly.
Hi, Ms. Karen, good to see you, I didn't see you guys back there behind me. Hi. Thank you. Anything else you need from us tonight?
No.
I know you're coming back in two minutes. Oh, you just don't want to go sit down?
I mean, you can.
All right, your mazel tov. Okay, the next item on the agenda, also from Ms. McGowan, is the 280 North Broad Street project.
Actually, I'll have the same comment, there's no action to be taken tonight, this is a sketch plan only, and I think Ms. McGowan is just going to give you an update, what it's about, and that sort of thing.
Correct. Jeff, thank you very much, so what we have this evening to present to you is an update on 280 North Broad Street, this has actually turned into what I'll call a larger discussion, not with respect to the property, but actually with respect to a proposed amendment, what we're suggesting as a text amendment to your LI Limited Industrial Zoning District in this area of Doylestown Township. So if I can start the PowerPoint. All right, I can go through it this way. So this is, and you will recall, because I think we started conversations about, specifically about 280 North Broad Street, at least three years ago, and we did so with multiple iterations of what was then proposed to be a different residential project. This is now what we want to talk to the township about, is a joint project between Penrose and Arcadia with a focus on what will be a senior affordable product. The township does not currently have a senior affordable housing use within the zoning ordinance that would contemplate this type of use. So what's proposed is a text amendment that would add a senior affordable use to the Doylestown Township zoning ordinance as a permitted use. So when we start to look at the use, we start with the need for affordable senior housing. What we've provided the board on this slide is some information with respect to what the need currently is, specifically with respect to seniors, senior households in Doylestown over the age of 55 or over 16,000, those senior households with an income of less than $50,000 is actually over 3,000, almost 3,500 households. Currently, the township has Grundy Hall, which we're familiar with, down on Om's House Road and 611, that does provide 152 senior affordable housing units, there is a two-and-a-half to three-year wait for that facility. So the other thing we wanted to point out, because it is relevant to your consideration of an LI text amendment in that area of the township, is a walk score. Walk scores are how conducive this location is to walkability, to surrounding services. So the walk score for Grundy Hall, as you see here, is a 54 on the scale of 100. So as we move on, I'm speaking of the LI district, you can see it in purple, we've provided the inset, it's almost a finger that comes down Broad Street off the township, you can see there's a small section in between what's shown in green, the other section of Doylestown Township, so really what that LI zoning district is, is a strip of land, it's approximately seven to 10 properties, has frontage on Broad Street, actually frontage on Broad Street until you get down to the very end, then there are a couple of properties that actually front on Doylestown Borough parcels, two properties, I believe, and then takes you all the way up to the bypass in the, for township land. That is the specific area that would be impacted by the text amendment, should you choose to move forward with that. So what it would look like, what it would mean to facilitate this type of use, there would be senior affordable housing units. The use density would be directly tied to the amount of affordable units that were provided, the percentage of affordable units provided within that, within that development. So a proposal, this proposal and any proposal, would not be 100% affordable. One of the benefits to this type of ordinance is that it would, would provide a percentage, it would provide a mixed income housing product. In what we're going to get to later, we're also proposing a multi-generational development, specifically a 280, separate and apart from, from the use that would be in this text amendment. The ordinance would require affordable units to meet HUD criteria, so they would not just be affordable in name only. That would be incomers having, having no greater than 60% of area median income, in Doylestown Township, that's $47,460. Again, seniors 62 and over, that would be, that would be your, your maximum income at 60%. Affordability must be ensured via deed restriction, again, that's, that's a requirement that could be written right into your ordinance, and we would also contemplate affordable units being mixed with the market rate units, as I mentioned. The LI zoning district, and I'll show it to you on the next slide, this is the Broad Street corridor, this is the end of that district that I mentioned, as you can see in red, that's actually the corner of 280 North Broad Street, and that starts the LI district moving up towards the bypass. Here you can see it again, one of the things that makes this portion of Doylestown Township unique, and this LI district unique, is its proximity to the services both in Doylestown Township and in Doylestown Borough. If we go on to the next slide, you can see that the walk score for this property is compared to the 54 at Grundy Hall is an 82, and that means that's, it's a, it's a vast improvement to what would be able to be provided to these residents in terms of amenities. We specifically noted the Bucks County Senior Center, that's located in proximity to this area, and as we all know, the shopping, post office, restaurants, and other Doylestown Borough amenities that are right down Veterans Lane. So specifically with respect to this property, this is the concept for 280 North Broad Street, again, multi-generational, mixed income, what you see as you come into the property are townhouse units, what you see to the rear of the property is what is proposed to be that new use, which is the affordable apartment unit. This is another vantage point, coming from the middle of the property, you see that central driveway, you see the townhouse units, and then the apartment building to the back. This is your high level, this is how this type of use would lay out, this is a concept plan to show you what that development would look like. So again, as I noted, Penrose and Arcadia have a strategic joint development proposed. What you saw on the slide before is a 60-unit, one-bedroom senior rental apartment, age-qualified, income-qualified. As I said before, what we would be able to facilitate is not just affordable units, but also a mix of units. This particular building would include workforce units, which would be market rate. When we say market rate, they would not be what we're thinking about right now as Doylestown market rate, which we all know where rental rates have gone in Doylestown recently, they're looking at the, the price point of approximately $1,800 a month for one of those units, they are all one-bedroom units. And the building will be marketed importantly, and we're getting to that, to senior veterans, specifically. It would also include 13 to 15 market rate townhouses, they would be for sale units, this would be the multi-generational portion of the proposed development, they would all be over three bedrooms, more marketed towards families, and not age-restricted. So I just mentioned, marketing focus on senior veterans. Penrose has a Ben Salem location that was recently developed, and the approach has been very successful. You'll see here, there are 40 units in the Ben Salem Bucks County location, again, they're one-person, single occupancy units, 55% of them are veteran occupied. They, the units cannot be solely for veterans because of HUD requirements, but there is a focus, and I think what the Ben Salem project has shown, is that if you do market them, you can get that population, and that's what Penrose would be looking to do at this location. I was actually shocked when, when Ryan told me, at least in 26 days for, for senior affordable. Waiting list is 40 people, half of them are veterans. So that's in our county, that's where we're at. So we looked at the population, we saw what Bucks County has, what the need is, 18,000 veterans ages 65 plus, Pennsylvania actually has the fourth-largest veterans population based on the numbers we found, with 55.34% of veterans in PA being over the age of 65. So this is Penrose's company profile, national developer, multifamily workforce housing, this is what they do, this is their specialty and what they're looking to do here, the staffing and service model, it's onsite management, minimal employees, this is an age-qualified, but it is not assisted, it's not a facility like that, but they do have full-time maintenance and supportive services. One of the things we looked at is having a community room, you know, having a gathering area, and those, those other amenities that you would see in an apartment building like this. There are discussions of partnerships with existing community not-for-profits, including the YMCA, as I mentioned, the Senior Center, which is pretty close to this property. So that is our high-level proposal. We've been discussing the best way to attempt to implement this, and came up with the text amendment proposal. I have sent a memorandum to Jeff that provides an outline of what would work in order to make this a viable development, again, in that LI district, and if the board is inclined, and if the board, you know, is in favor of this type of use, the next step would be to authorize Jeff to take, to take that memorandum, or to take the, the comments of, of this board, and put that into an ordinance for advertisement, so there can be a more formal discussion of, of what that ordinance would look like.
Okay, Jen, you want to say something here?
Yeah, with any development that we see in the township, one of the first concerns people have is traffic. And I know the Broad Street corridor, you've, this property has been in front of our planning commission a couple times, and that still comes up. How are we looking at addressing the volume of traffic, especially with the new, new apartments that are being built across the street?
So we've already run traffic numbers, and two things are going on on this property, the first of which is it's an industrial zone property, right? So traffic generation, character of the traffic that can be generated from an industrial development, we don't think, especially in this property that's further down away from the bypass, would be conducive to that area of Broad Street either, to have a, a heavy industrial use or other uses that your LI district would currently support. Senior affordable is not a high-traffic generating use, they're single apartments, what Penrose has found in their other facilities is that generally you have 50% of occupants have car, even have cars, let alone the amount of time that they're driving them. What we're showing here is parking that would provide just under one parking space per unit, and that's probably too many, it's just not a high-traffic generating use. Again, the townhouses at that density, same type of thing, but yes, going through a land development, you know, as you, you know, Jen, yeah, those numbers are going to be important, like every other land development, traffic engineer is going to have to take a look at them, going to have to take a look at, at what that looks like for, for the area.
One other concern that keeps coming up is the infrastructure... One other concern that keeps coming up is the infrastructure for electric vehicles, especially when it comes to people who live in apartments. Because when you have a home with a garage, you can always plug in, or even with an outlet on the outside. But a lot of people that own or rent apartments don't have that luxury. Is that something that's being considered?
I think it would certainly be considered. It's not something we've specifically discussed, but we could certainly do so. Yes. Thank you.
Has the borough approved the townhomes that are up front?
So there are, there's no development proposed in the borough. So if I can go back to, as Jen just referenced, we've had multiple conversations about this property going back for years. We had a joint meeting of planning commissions. That was back via Zoom in 2020, I think. We've since been to each planning commission respectively. And at this time, that borough parcel is zoned CI, so it's also an industrial parcel. And the borough has not shown an inclination to change that zoning or to otherwise do anything in their CI district. So what's shown in this concept is that existing building, which is the Tilly Fire Company Building. It would be an adaptive reuse of that building for, you know, potentially something permitted in the CI district already. But no, all of the residential development has been eliminated.
Okay. Any other questions?
Does this require a vote, a consensus?
We have to authorize me to prepare an ordinance and advertise it in accordance with the MPC for you to have a public hearing.
Okay. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Calling the question on favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time tonight.
Thanks, Kelly.
Did you draft the proposed ordinance?
I drafted a memorandum for Jeff, which goes, which is detailed. It's not, certainly not in ordinance form, but the information should be there.
What is here is really good, so I just wanted to give you credit for it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Can you send us the presentation?
Oh, absolutely.
Great, thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Okey-dokey. Now moving on to, we've dealt with the Bucks County Court of Common Pleas DUI issue. Next is the resolution proposed for Doylestown Township, remote access to public resolution. It's something I'm not in favor of, if I'm going to start out there, because I think it's important to residents to know that if they need to come to a meeting, or if they need to come to, or they want to attend a committee meeting, that they know that that's available to them. It's more important that a resident know that it's available to them than for us to create some kind of policy suggesting to our staff that they need to do that. Our staff already knows what to do and how to do it. It's more important that a resident through our website or some other form of communication know that that's available to them. So I don't favor a policy of micromanaging the staff to do what it already knows what to do. So that's my thought on this policy. And Ryan last meeting took, you know, made the suggestion that why are we voting on, you know, employees who have overnight visits on their overnight stays on, you know, their training sessions? Why do we have to do that? It's already in the budget. We already prove it. It goes to the preview or purview of the manager. So this is one of those items where I think we don't need to micromanage the staff. But I do think it's important that residents, residents, not just anybody, but residents of the township have access to a committee meeting in the event that they cannot attend for whatever reason, with sufficient notice to the staff to prepare for that absence. That's what I think. Now, you know, I'm one person here, and I know it's important. It's a resolution that's important to some of you, so that's all I have to say about it.
To me, this is more setting expectations of our residents more than our staff members.
I agree.
That it's, I don't, obviously I want our residents to be able to attend virtually if they, for whatever reason, they can't make it, and it's relevant to their interests. But I also want there to be the expectation, like, it's not a drop everything, we're going to get you in.
Correct.
Thing, like, you kind of need to meet us, like, and that's not, that's not just us being all-powerful. That's like, we, our staff has limited time. We want to give them plenty of time to make sure everything is set up appropriately to be able to join, and we're not scrambling at the last second.
And all that can be done with just a notice on the website or whatever that we have on our sites to say. If you need to attend a meeting and you cannot, if you want to attend a meeting and you cannot, please give notice to the township at this number or in this process, this way, 38, I mean, 36 hours, 48 hours in advance, so that arrangements can be made for you to attend virtually.
I think our staff is perfectly capable of managing all of this. I do agree that we need to have accessibility for people. That's always been a concern of mine, and after we had COVID, it became pretty common to have meetings through Zoom. But I attend meetings all the time, and these hybrid meetings, half Zoom, half in-person, they're actually really difficult to coordinate. So I think having a policy in place, not necessarily a board-set policy, but maybe just the staff's policy, where we need to have the 36 or whatever, our 72-hour notice so that the staff has time to prepare, but also the ability for them to say, this isn't going to be possible for this meeting. There are planning commission meetings that we go out in the field, and there's absolutely no way that we could, we could do that through Zoom. So there are going to be meetings that are not going to be able to be accessible through Zoom. But our staff works really hard to make our meetings available for everybody. I also think that if we are going to put a policy for, we need to put some rules in place as far as allowing people to have time to speak. We need to make sure that people have public comment in all of these meetings. But if people abuse them, just like they would in person, if somebody is going against protocol, that there is some sort of recourse that our staff has or the chair of that committee has to either correct that problem. But for me, I think it can be a policy that, not necessarily a resolution.
Well, I think the staff is totally incapable, are totally capable of, you know, devising whatever protocol it needs to devise and advise the public accordingly. And I agree with you that inappropriate comment hardly ever happens, but it, the, that would be the job of the chair of that committee to relegate that.
Right.
Issue. So we're not looking to cut somebody off because they're talking inappropriately. It's, it would be managed like any meeting.
Right.
Chair's in charge and.
Yeah, if somebody stood up in here and started screaming, you know, we would have recourse.
Well, that's, so the resolution isn't on our agenda. What is, is there a motion to approve it, or is a motion to table it?
I just wanted to make a comment. I think the point of the resolution, whatever that is, is to create transparency and accessibility. I think we are, we have been the leaders in communication. It allows people to attend committee meetings. Those are the conversations, those are the meat and potatoes oftentimes of what's happening in the township. It gives them an opportunity to talk with the chair of the Park and Rec or the EAC and ask their question. And, you know, I actually, interesting you brought that up, is that I think I saw in one of the, in one of the agendas, they limit the time spent. And sometimes, you know, we have to remember, it's really intimidating to go to a meeting and to stand up and ask a question or to attend one, and they're nervous, so we have to give them that time. I'm not saying to bend the entire meeting around someone, but we serve the people. So that, my point to bringing up this idea of having access to these committee meetings was really just about being able to have access to that information. Sometimes the agenda meeting minutes are more detailed than others. It just depends on who's doing them. So that, because I know if I don't make a meeting, I read the agenda minutes, and sometimes I'm really not clear what happened. So my point is just to allow people the opportunity to be able to attend that meeting if they need be. Do I think it's going to happen often? No. Stephanie, is it either you or an assistant manager typically at most of those meetings?
Typically, or department heads.
Or department head, so.
I was not quite sure.
I don't think it would be a hardship, but.
We, these meetings are accessible to anybody. We accommodate virtual Zoom right now. So I don't understand why, there's transparency right now. If you want to attend a meeting via Zoom right now, you can, and people do, so.
I don't think we've ever.
Well, we'll let everybody know that it's available to them. That's the point of our communication. If you're going to make a comment, I need you to come to the podium. That's okay.
About, my point is, by saying it, you know, it's still not out there. I'm just trying to be transparent and.
Maybe Stephanie, you put it on the website or something. I just don't think this is something that requires a resolution.
I do think that if, if we're promoting this, which I think is a good thing to do, that we also reach out to the chairs of each of our committees and let them know that this is going to be something that we're promoting and to make sure that they put together some sort of guidelines for themselves in their meetings so that they can say, okay, we'll have public comment at the end. We'll have, you know, we'll mute all attendees until public comment, something like that, so they can manage their own meetings.
Good idea.
You could also add to, on our website where we have the calendar links for each meeting, we could add a thing, a link about signing up for Zoom or something like that. Because I assume that's how most people find out about our committee meetings.
That's a good idea, too.
Yep. I mean, I also think it's a great opportunity to find volunteers, because sometimes you're like, oh, I didn't realize what the EAC has done. And, you know, a lot of retirees here, so, you know, I have a lot of neighbors who've just retired, and I'm telling them about the trees, and I think they all want to talk with Janine Mitchell now. So I just think it's an opportunity for, to have another touch with the community.
All right. I think everybody agrees.
Yeah, the resolution might not be the conduit for it, but we can.
Well, is there a motion to table the resolution?
Motion to table.
I need a second.
I'll second.
All in favor of tabling the resolution?
Aye.
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 Zoning hearing board applications. 31 Sheridan, is there, is that going to the zoning hearing board without?
Yes.
Opposition?
Correct.
How about 218 Windsor Way?
Same. All of them can.
All of them, 700 Pebble Hill Road.
Yep.
All going to the zoning hearing board without opposition from the township. Next item is a treasures report for September 19th, 2023. Did I say that right?
Yeah.
Is there a motion to approve the treasures report?
Motion to approve.
Second. Honesty, all in favor?
Aye.
Bills list for September 19th, 2023?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
May I ask the privilege of being able to leave? My eight-year-old grandson is languishing in Stephanie Mason's office.
He could have left a half hour ago.
And he has school tomorrow morning.
Well, go get him.
Good night, Jeff.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay. Next meeting of this board is Tuesday, October 17th.
I'll bring him across the front so you know I'm not tipping.
2020, we know you're not tipping. 2023 at 7:00 PM, sorry. Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors and a finance committee will meet for a budget work session on Tuesday, October 3rd at 5:30.
Um, yeah.
And a special meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 3rd at 4:30. And the next meeting of the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors is October 17th. And we're also having a budget work session on October 17th at 5:00 PM. Doylestown Municipal Building is closed for Indigenous Peoples' Day on October 9th. And Township News, even though Stacy is leaving, will continue to your inboxes on Fridays at 4 o'clock. So sign up for it. Any public comment for anything else? Please. Pardon?
You did a great job.
Who, me? Everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Fred Greco. I am here with Doylestown Athletic Association, DAA, and just wanted to say a couple of things if I could. Real quick, Dan, a lot of what you said tonight I resonated with. We've, a special place for me, Central Park. We held my son's first birthday here, and he took his first steps. So like me and many other families, there's lots of memories here. With that being said, I do want to say that we value our relationship with Doylestown Township, the borough. We appreciate that partnership. We respect that partnership. I do want to go on record as well as saying that space is limited in this area. And, you know, we're working with the schools, and we will certainly entertain and evaluate and see what opportunities arise for us to utilize that community center when that comes available, if it comes available, and hopefully it does come available. That's all I really have to say. I just wanted to come out here and tell you that, you know, we thank you, and we would like to see this happen.
Thank you, Mr. Greco.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fred.
Any other public comment?
What I want to ask is, make a request, actually. The two land development projects that were briefed tonight are both very intriguing. They both sound very, very positive for the borough and for the township. But I would have liked to have been able to ask the development lady some questions. For example, the lower-income housing that's going in, she talked about a veteran population, a senior citizen population. So the next question that comes to my mind is, okay, if we're going to have a high-veteran population, are we going to have an office or representative from the VA there to help deal with those veterans? Are we going to have senior citizens living there? Is there going to be somebody, a nurse or somebody on-site that can on a regular basis deal with them? And I would have, as we go forward, if we have something like this in the future, maybe ask if there's any questions before they actually pack up and leave the room, and we can't ask that question now. Because I think, I mean, I've been driving by there trying to figure out what they're building on that big piece of land that used to be the Intelligencer.
It's an apartment.
Now we know what it's going to be, and I would have just liked to have asked those questions because there is no VA office anywhere near Doylestown, and it's got a high VA population here.
I've never known you to be shy, Mr. Cox. If you had a question, you could have asked one. However, these two items will be back on our agenda, so you'll have plenty of opportunity to ask those questions.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
And also in the meantime, I think it would be fair, if you wanted to write a letter to our planning commission or something like that, they review this very often, too, and they'd be happy to look at that correspondence and address your concerns when they discuss this as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other public comment? Hearing none. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.
There are documents to be signed.
You think?
DAA guy.
Sorry, I'm doing my planning of what I'm going to do tonight, and this night was marked off in light off.
I think I've heard it before, too. Numerous times.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Thank you, Lieutenant.
Nope, I'm going to a project. Oh, lucky you. 6:00 PM, 6:00 AM work.